...with us tonight. As always, I'm trying to raise issues and education about those issues to the community. And so, tonight we're going to talk about a couple of things. Citizen advocacy, the legislative process, education, healthcare initiatives, criminal justice reform, and then just open forum for any questions that you have. Can you hear me better? Yes. Okay. Much better. Okay. All right. So, we'll go ahead and get started tonight. And the library is making an announcement, so I expect other people will be joining us. So, anyway, glad that you could be here tonight. So, first, we'll start with, "An improved education means economic prosperity." And so, some of the things that we worked on in the legislative session this year were really to improve the school systems and improve just the overall opportunities for educators to really be more effective in the classroom. And there were several key things that happened this year that I thought were significant. Most importantly, I think, were the emails that we got from teachers who were really excited about the changes that we made in their evaluations. And those evaluations were previously 50% was rating them based on the standardized scores of their students. And so, certainly, that's a concern that one tool and measure is really being used to evaluate a teacher's performance. Also, because there's such a variety of student skill levels in a school setting, it's really hard to necessarily gauge their improvement when you have a wide scope of students in a classroom. So, you have some students that are on par for the class. You have some that are above average. And then, you have some that have not been diagnosed with a special learning issue or maybe transitioning from another school setting and so may have missed some very important foundational skills. And so, because of the wide scope of learning in a classroom, the teacher is challenged to make sure that she can address all of the children's skill levels and raise those scores for each of the students in the classroom. So, typically, in a classroom setting, once the school year starts, if they had been in the system previously, a teacher would take the scores from the year before and map out a plan of action for the year for that student. Now, if a student transfers in from another school setting, it can be within the state of Georgia, which makes it a little easier because we all have the same standards in Georgia. But if they come from another state with a different set of standards, the challenge is trying to match and make sure that their foundational skills are strong enough to master what the class is learning at that time. For instance, in Georgia, children, of course, know how to add and subtract and are working on multiplication around second grade. But time tests are an integral part of what children do in second grade. So, if a child comes to a class in second grade and doesn't have the fundamental skills to do addition and subtraction consistently and in a quick timeframe, then it holds the rest of the class up. So, again, trying to get the students on an even playing field at a minimum really is one of the goals of a teacher's class. If the children excel above and beyond that, there's many opportunities in the classroom for teachers to do individualized learning and small group activities. But if we have children who are falling behind, that's where the remediation process starts with. So, if you have, out of 20 students, three students that need remediation, those three students go through a process for evaluation. And part of that process then can result in an outcome of an individualized education plan. And the individualized education plan is a tool that educators can use to guide the learning for those children in need. And it could include everything from physical therapy, occupational therapy. It could also include speech and language development. And so, those things really help make students' opportunities in school more well-rounded and give individualized attention that they need. It could also result in a paraprofessional being sent into the classroom to help that student achieve success. Or it could mean that they do what is called pull-out, where the children are removed for a portion of the day. And there could be reading enhancements in place or math assessments in place to help those students go back to the fundamental skills they're missing and then raise their level of academic achievement. The... So, anyway, the teacher evaluations was certainly a very positive piece of legislation that came out this year. And it was led by the chair of the state's education committee. We also had the biliteracy bill, which I carried for a House member. And that biliteracy bill was very effective in making sure that students that were in high school as seniors were able to take a competency exam for a foreign language. And so, there were several components to the competency test. But once they take that test and pass it, they then would be able to go into workforce and possibly earn additional wages because of the fact that they are bilateral and it's been evaluated. They could also exempt college classes, which means if they're on a HOPE or the Zell Miller, that they could actually save those credits to use for higher levels of classes. And this would actually give them a seal, in addition to the one they're receiving on their high school diploma, they could receive a second seal that documents that they have passed those competency tests. Any questions about either one of those items? Okay. One of the other things that we worked on this year was what's called an all-place sports program. So, it opens the avenues for private schools and public schools to negotiate if they want to play sports, program each other in the sports. Previously, there were programs that were driving an extended amount of time playing sports throughout Georgia. This gives a lot of the rural school systems the opportunity to play local schools and stay in the community, which was very well-supported. And we actually had testimony and committee about the opportunities that would be achieved through this, which would reduce fuel costs for the bus transportation, time for the bus driver, and also playing in your own community, which was a very big plus for many of the people that were bringing that information to us. As far as ideas for improving education in 2017, we're still working to find out from our educators in the community. So, we have had a teacher town hall. There are certainly emails and contacts that we've received throughout the year. But we hope that there will be more engagement from the education community to really address what their plan is moving forward. I'm sure many of you have heard about the opposition to the Opportunity School District and all three of the counties that I represent, Rockdale, Newton, and DeKalb. So, I hope that instead of just saying no, that they're going to come up with a plan of action that will really address some of the needs that need to happen. In DeKalb County, we had 26 schools on the failing list. And under the supervision and leadership of Dr. Stephen Green, he's been able to move those 26 failing schools down to three. And so, that's significant progress for each of the families in those communities. But the other three that are on the list are targeted to be off the list by the end of December. So, I will say that the threat of the Community School District has proven to be very successful right here in our backyard in DeKalb. And Dr. Green and his staff have been very involved in the schools, very innovative in their measures. But I will say, until we get our communities and the schools and our parents more engaged and more accountable, I think we continue to have the challenges that we have now in public education. Additionally, a lot of the transition that you'll see in the schools that are not thriving is one of the biggest concerns from people that I've spoken with. We literally have families that will cycle through several schools each year. And so, of course, the instability for those children means that their learning is absolutely impacted. And so, we know that there's plans in place to help address that. But the more wraparound services is what's been talked about as far as bringing in opportunities for them to go to school earlier, go to school later in the afternoon. And I do have great concerns about that because once we take away the opportunity for parents to engage and we basically become from a crackadon to very late at night care providers for these children, the parents have been taking away the responsibility and the opportunity to really teach and educate their children. So, I really hope that we'll look at more programs that will do parent liaison work, like we have here in Rockdale County. That's proven to be very, very successful. Parent liaisons are now at every school in Rockdale County. And so, many of the people that I know that are parent liaisons here in Rockdale County were actually former parents of the school or currently have children in the school system. And so, they've engaged with parents that typically would not be engaged in the school and education process and whose children may fall between the cracks. So, those liaisons are very important in engaging those families and helping the children make sure that, you know, homework and support systems at home are in place. So, as we know, the improved education opportunities will mean we'll have better job opportunities for students. We're very fortunate in Rockdale County that we have Rockdale Career Academy. How many of you have ever visited there and taken a tour? Very good. I'd like to do a tour in the future. I think that's really an important thing for families in the community and our citizens in the community to see the opportunities that are there for the students in Rockdale County. They have programs in everything from healthcare to auto mechanic, graphic design, videography. They now have added forensics, fire science, as well as several other classes that have been very, very successful. When I was a commissioner in Rockdale County, one of our greatest challenges at the time was finding enough firefighters to go through our group program. And so, that's really when the partnership started with RCA because we knew that if we could get these kids coming out of school, they could really go into the brotherhood and sisterhood of firefighting and be great long-term employees for the county and best of stakeholders in the community. So, I know that that's proven to be successful for us. But we're also now really struggling with finding law enforcement officers as well. So, there are additional plans to help continue to further those programs at RCA where the interest for the students that they have were a clear path that they could pursue when they get out of school and certainly have well-paying jobs coming out of school. So, I think those are certainly good movements in the right direction. And technical schools such as Georgia Piedmont have actually added law enforcement program classes. And in Georgia Piedmont right now, Harry, who's one of the instructors, actually has a 17-week program where someone can go to class for 17 weeks. And once they get finished, they'll not only be post-certified, which is required for most long-person positions, but they will also be very close to receiving their two-year degree from Georgia Piedmont. And that is a very unusual experience that you would be able to really get that many credits in such a short timeframe. So, the opportunity to get so close to your two-year degree with a 17-week program is just unlike anything I've ever heard of. So, I think certainly it's a rare opportunity. One of the things I'm working on is making sure that the funding is there because it used to be paid for by HOPE and then the funding got taken away. And so, now, it's right now either a private pay or the community that's hiring them as a potential law enforcement officer is paying for the class. So, that's one of the things that I think we can change to support our communities, support our law enforcement officers, is to send them through these programs but also have a financial support for them so that we'll have well-trained officers in a variety of topics that are related to law enforcement. But most importantly, in crisis intervention and how to work with the mentally ill and other classes that are related to that. Because that's one of our challenges as a community with some of the criminal justice reform measures and some of the other measures to deal with lawsuits that the state of Georgia was in. Some of the repercussions of that was when lawsuits happened with some of our mental health facilities in the state. A lot of the mental health patients were actually pushed back to the communities. And so, when they were put back in the communities, what happens is we don't have the same level of support as they did at the facilities they once attended. So, now, not only is law enforcement challenged with some of the people that need additional support in our community, but the rest of the community is challenged financially. And I know not only the county, but I would imagine the city probably sees some of these impacts too. People that are here, but they can't hold jobs, they may not be as productive as we'd like to see them at this point. But how do we really address their needs and make sure that they're educated about the health services available to them? We currently have Viewpoint Health, which is off Taylor Street. And that is where we direct people for mental health services because it is a federally-qualified health center. And services are provided to community members on a sliding scale basis. So, it's a very good opportunity to get people engaged in mental health programs and on a sliding scale. So, it's certainly affordable for people and it provides stability in services, which is one of the things that we've had tremendous disconnects with so far. So, one of the things that we hear in the community a lot is in our school system, our community, our society really promotes the need for college education as the way to get ahead and really achieve success for your family. And so, one of the things that we've also noticed is that we have a lot of people in the community that are aging in workforce areas that we desperately need people trained in. For instance, in a lot of our manufacturing environments, we have people that have been there 20, 25 years, sometimes longer. And as they're growing older and closer to retirement, now, we need people that are trained in everything from mechanics and repairs to just general, basic workshop environments. And so, those are some of the things that I know RCA has been very supportive of, working with companies in our community. But we are still seeing a tremendous disconnect between those looking for employment and the employers who are seeking employees. So, that disconnect means not only are our employers not as productive and efficient as they could be, but our employees, potential employees, are sitting at home because they just don't have either the right mix of job skills or sometimes they don't have the connections to really make that happen. And I will tell you, I was working with somebody and I filled out a U-Haul application with them. And after four pages of a U-Haul application, I thought, no wonder people were discouraged because I asked for every bit of information under the sun. So, those kind of things I know are a blocking for some people in the community that would be great employees. So, I think continued efforts to educate them and reach out, make sure that they're as qualified as possible is really, really important. So, we had a job fair last, yes, last month down in Covington because my district runs from Penole Road all the way down to Alcoa Road and out to Livingston Elementary. So, I have about 172,000 residents in the district and thousands of businesses. And what I was saying about the disconnect between the two was so evident at the job fair where we talked to several of the employers and they said, "We're just looking for some annual labor." I mean, it was pretty simple what they were looking for. But they said, you know, the soft skills of people showing up early, people being dressed appropriately, having a clean drug history, a good driving record, just simple things like that are harder than you would ever expect to find. And so, in speaking with several of the advocates that came in that day, I was first impressed that people were there for the event before 7:30. And the job fair didn't start till 8:15. So, those are certainly people that are go-getters. But I also think that it says that those are probably people that are currently employed but what they call underemployed. So, they're working, but their skill level and prior salary experience is much higher than what they're currently gaining. But how responsible of them and how early so that they could come in, meet people, and go directly to their job. So, I was very impressed by the number of people that were there early during that time. I do know that through the job fairs that I've been to with Thomas Chastain and some of the other leaders in the community that have tried to have successful job fairs, we've seen an array of interests. So, there's, you know, almost, I think Thomas does a great job with the blue-collar job fairs, people that are really trying to improve their life but more technically skilled, more vocationally skilled. And so, he's seen, you know, great turnout. They've had as many as 500-plus to some of the job fairs and they've made connections and hired people. But in the upper level, more professional job fairs, we do need to see more of those because I know in the last one I had, there was a great meeting with the Rockdale County local government. They've been hiring a lot of positions. And so, to try and connect those people as well so that they're not happy to drive to Alpharetta and Atlanta and all the jobs downtown, to keep those jobs retained right here in the community would be great with their quality of life and also make them have time for more investment in the community. So, one of the things that we had a forum about a week ago with Dr. Mike, no, doctor, I'm sorry, appellate court judge Michael Boggs, he came down and spoke to us about criminal justice reform and shared some exciting information about the taxpayer investment that we've seen in criminal justice reform. The criminal justice reform plan was really that of the governor said he's very passionate about this and we've seen some very interesting statistics that have proven to be successful so far. So, our projected prison growth was about 8% by 2016 on the target that we were on before. It was expected to go from 57,000 to almost 60,000 inmates in the state of Georgia. That would have been about an additional $264 million to expand the capacity as we've done right here in Rockdale County. We used to hold a lot of state prisoners here in the county. And so, we built our jail and expanded it to over 700 people to accommodate them. So, currently, there's two different buildings. One's in the number of 300 per capacity and then the other building has about 400 per capacity. And I was going to ask the other night someone in law enforcement, I think we have over about 400 inmates right now in Rockdale County because the state has actually done away with a lot of the payouts for holding state prisoners and maybe a program more efficient and we'll see in a few minutes some of those numbers. So, in 2010, more than 5,000 low-risk drug and property offenders were sentenced to the Department of Corrections. And that accounted for about 25% of all of their admissions. Georgia was ranked last, so 1 in 13. So, Judge Boggs, when they started criminal justice reform several years ago, these were the targeted areas that they worked on. And so, initially, of course, adult sentencing reform, juvenile justice reform, offender reentry, which is something we talked about a lot here in Rockdale County, and then misdemeanor probation reform. So, one of the biggest changes that we saw is when the legislation changed the felony threshold for burglary, theft, and forgery from $500 to $1,500, there was a significant drop in the inmates that we saw. So, what happened is when it was below that 1,500 threshold, then those were treated as misdemeanors and they went through a different system of resolution. They also moved to a weight-based drug sentencing and mandated the electronic submission of sentencing from the clerk of court to the Department of Corrections. This was a very big initiative because it streamlined a lot of the paperwork that before had really created a lot of issues with accuracy but also length of time. So, the electronic submission was a great investment and has really made things much smoother in the system. It also established mandatory minimum safety valves, so drug trafficking would be applied if certain provisions were meant. The certificates of program and treatment completion meant that people were able to go through these programs, provide the documentation, and then report back to the court system. And then, it also expanded parole eligibility for non-violent drug recidivist. I don't want to bore you with all these slides, so I'll run through just a couple of these things. So, some of the appropriations today, there were over about $65 million in new state appropriations. Through that, through this, does anybody know what they did that was the big change with the court systems? It was the creation of accountability courts. And I will say that I applaud Judge Nancy Bill's for her efforts because she was one of the first ever judges with an accountability court, and that was the DUI court. And I've seen great successes through the graduation programs that she's held. And what it allows people to do is really, it gets people on the front end of sentencing and allows them to go through this program and have wraparound services such as mental health and support services, treatment programs, outpatient activities. And it allows people to then really get back to work. Because many times when we send people to jail, we're not only punishing that person, we're punishing the family, the children, and we're taking somebody that used to earn income and pays the tax system out of the market. And so, this has proven effective. And so, we've also had Judge Humber who started the drug court. There's other, there's also other courts that have been discussed to be added as well, including a mental health court and a veterans' court. And so, those are opportunities to really focus in and specialize in different courts that can help solve the problems for a certain population that's been in question. There was also $10 million appropriated for education. So, now, we're seeing more of the inmates work towards achieving their GBB as well as technical certificates and AA programs. This was one of the initiatives to really get people back into the workforce once they leave the prison, population and jails. And so, what we've seen is people that have completed their education because so often we see people in jail who really weren't great students in school, didn't have a lot of confidence. And so, because they lacked the skills to find gainful employment, they were choosing decisions and patterns that were not as healthy. And so, this has been very effective. We have this program in Rockdale County. And then, there was another $3 million appropriated for reentry services. And Kathleen, actually, and I got to go to the Lee Arundel Women's Center a couple of months ago and see firsthand some of the changes that have been made in the program. And what we saw was at Lee Arundel Women's Center, it's the highest maximum security prison in Georgia for women. There's actually three, and this is the highest level of security. And at the prison, they actually had work programs where they trained people in welding. They trained them in things like auto mechanic, vet tech, and those types of things that would allow for them to have gainful employment once they left the jail. And what they do is they go through those programs for a lengthy period of time and then three months before they are supposed to get out, they actually can work in the community through a partnership that they had in place at the prison. And so, we've seen what had turned out to be very good results in people being able to restore their lives. Additionally, they had a neat program through the Humane Society there where they allowed up to 14 of the prisoners to have dogs on site in their jail cell. And they were responsible for a very, very structured schedule of training the dogs. And what they do, once the dogs have completed their level of training, then they actually work with the special needs community to send those dogs to help people that have a variety of challenges, everything from blind to diabetic. So, a wide array of people that they train the dogs for. And so, what they've seen is just a greater level of compassion and engagement from those people. And it's given a lot of the inmates a purpose for the day of the work. And so, right now, they send about 25% are participating in the training programs and education programs. And then, there's a smaller population that's actually working, of course, with every program from the dog training to some of the other extra programs that they have in place at Arundel. I was kind of surprised by the fact that there are some prisoners that just don't have to do a whole lot every day. They have some work assignments, but other than that, they're... They have some work assignments, but other than that, they're really, they're not required classes or programs or things like that. So, I'm delving into really what they do okay and how they'll be productive once they get closer to their least aid. I'm skipping through a lot of these slides because we have. So, you can see, this slide is a great slide to show you a little bit about how the different changes in legislation help bring down the levels of inmates in the state of Georgia. So, at one time, you can see that the commitments were at their high point of about 22,000 and they've been reduced through three different pieces of legislation to result in the lowest overall commitment since 2002. So, in 2015, they reached an all-time low. So, this shows the racial composition of prison commitments here and you can see that each of the reductions in 2009 to what we see is 2015, you can see the reductions across the board for both African-American and Caucasian inmates. And so, the negative numbers certainly mean that we're decreasing the prison populations that's most prominent in the African-American community and a lot of that really, we think, was due to the change in the movement from felony from $500 to $1,500 as well as the low-level drug offenses being changed and lessened. All right, so juvenile justice is one of the, once they addressed the adult population, they wanted to move on to the juvenile population. And what we've seen, you may know that we have a program right here in Rockdale, a juvenile program here in Rockdale over near the jail off Sidon Road. And so, we see that the trend has really been for most of these, for the numbers to go down as the fiscal years have come. So, in 15, we see that the numbers were down, but one of the most important statistics I want you to remember is that when we send juveniles to a youth detention center, the annual cost is about $90,000 for bed for the year. To put a student in public school in Rockdale County ranges somewhere in the $7,400 to $9,500 range. So, as you can see, it's a greater investment for us to work with these students and find success early on than to pay $9,000 a year for additional support. That's one reason that I think a top priority for the legislature needs to be education reform. And through reform, we're going to look at hopefully the funding formula that's been outdated for almost 20 years is the last time it's really been changed. So, those changes, I think, will be an important step towards reducing long-term prison populations. You probably heard before, like your reading level at third grade helps determine how many beds are needed in Georgia. Well, that's kind of close to actual, they look at third and sixth grade. But, it's very important for us to remember that the funding formula helps with communities and schools and just those wraparound support services for the parents and getting them engaged. And so, the investment from a taxpayer perspective is much stronger to do in the early years versus the later years, of course. If you have any questions about slides, please raise your hand and let me know. I'd be more than happy to address any of these. So, school disciplinary procedures, they have been statute dealing with disruption of interference with operation of public schools and we have more of a more aggressive discipline for students. So, in Rockdale County, we have the Alpha School, which is where children are referred to for a period of time. And it's a very structured schedule at the Alpha School and typically give students a lot of support and the goal is that the next school year, sometimes sooner, but most often the next school year that they could return based on what they were sent to Alpha School for. It also provided for increased training for school disciplinary hearing officers, so there is a hearing process when students are sent. And it also mandates the use of a memorandum of understanding and systems employing the use of school resource officers, which all our schools in Rockdale County have. And I'm sorry, let me just say, the little school and high school, just to clarify. We also have the misdemeanor, oops, kind of can't go back, so I'll have to skip that slide, I apologize. So, looking ahead, one of the focuses is examining the costs and public safety returns realized by the opposition to these mandatory non-control parole eligible sentencing. So, for instance, Judge Boggs gave us an example of somebody, let's say that previously had stolen something that was over $500 three different times, okay? This is what the old law used to say, on the fourth time, they were sentenced to life in prison under the old regulations. So, really, somebody could steal something from Walmart, Kmart, wherever, three different times and on the fourth offense, they didn't get a sentence of life. You wouldn't even get close to that for murder in most cases. So, those were the kind of rules that didn't make a lot of sense and didn't give judge his local control of sentencing and things of that nature. So, a lot of that's been restored and rightfully so, and we're seeing more housing response, but there's still a lot more to be done to get sentencing standards correct. So, the national average, look at these numbers, this is pretty staggering. So, in Georgia's adult felony and misdemeanor probation systems, we have 471,000 people on probation that have to report on a regular basis. So, the national average is about 1,560 people per 100,000. In Georgia, we have 6,161 people. That is one reason that they are looking at probation reform and changing some of the methods that are used so that we can get some of those people off of the probation. Because when people are applying for jobs, and we saw this at the job where we had recently, there were people there that had felonies and they were not against people, they were not, they might have been verbally hurt, things like that. Once they get out, they can be federally bonded, which gives them better opportunities to be employed, but employers, because of lack of knowledge, they are very wary to hire people with criminal history. And so, what happens is they come out and they don't have job opportunities and they almost go back to the same patterns and cycles as they were on before. And so, that's one of the goals moving forward for Judge Boggs, is looking at the probation system and seeing how we can improve that and get our numbers down closer to the national average. So, right now, we're close to about that, almost five and a half times what the national average is.
Janice?
Yes?
What is the ratio of probation workers to probationers?
So, we don't have that in the slide and that's actually a good question.
What is, what, what is the?
What is the ratio of probation employees to probationers?
I don't, I don't have the exact figures, but it's like probation has.
A very good case.
Is that an area that requires addressing?
Well, yes, I think that that certainly will be important, however, I think with some of the reform that Judge Boggs mentioned, they were looking at, that could help change some of the caseloads because there may be opportunities to lessen the number of probation people on probation. I would tell you as a counterpart, at the Department of Family and Children's Services, they are absolutely taxed to the max, if you will. So, their caseload is still very large and in the last budget cycle, we were able to put money in for 175 new Department of Family and Children's Services employees throughout the state of Georgia. However, that did not really address the salary range for people that are working in family and children services. So, what we see is a very high turnover rate in the DFACs case workers. So, our local DFACs offices, in fact, I talked to Veronica Parrot, who's a Rockdale DFACs department head, and she was talking about how she's like constantly interviewing people because the turnover is so great and a lot of it is the local salary levels and just the challenges. And I would also say the people that you have to deal with, I mean, sometimes there are some very tough situations that you see as a social worker that not everybody can handle. So, it takes very special people to do that type of job, but their caseload is still high. The 175 people is certainly a measure in the right direction to address that, but when Kathleen and I were speaking at the TANAP meeting that they had recently in Newton County, TANAP is the Temporary Assistance for Needy Program, and when we were addressing some of the participants in that program, we were also talking to staff later who said, "Do you know just about every DFAC employee here could qualify for benefits because of the salary?"
State employees too, I mean seriously.
Oh, yeah, state employees too. So, because there haven't been raises in such a long time, that's definitely a very, very big challenge. And for DFACs especially, you know, and for some reason, I feel like when I go to Rockdale DFACs, it's more under control, calm. The DFACs office in Newton County is just packed every single day and, you know, they're doing multiple services, trying to help people in need, but I would love to see more job training opportunities for people coming in here. And when Kathleen and I spoke to some of the TANAP recipients, there were absolutely people there that wanted to work and improve their lives and get back on the right path. And then we had one lady who said, "I mean, I have eight kids."
I was the wrong one for her to tell that to.
Yes, so, and, I mean, for me, and.
She was what, Janice, under 30?
Yeah, under 30. And so, for us, we know, it's not a good use of taxpayer dollars for her to go back to work. When you have eight children to pay in TANAP, you're going to spend over $1,000 a week just putting in childcare so that she can work and she's probably going to work at a job that's lower level because she did not have higher education. So, those challenges are really hard and when we spoke to the TANAP director, I said, "You know, maybe she'd be perfect for a first shift call center like Amazon hires people out of their home and it could actually be call agents for Amazon."
My daughter does have AMX out of her home.
Yeah, so there's definitely opportunities, but I think traditionally, DFACs is focused on physical spaces for jobs and rightfully so, that's traditionally what we've seen. But some of the newer opportunities for work at home that are legitimate, because we hear about a lot of jobs that are not legitimate work from home, some of those legitimate jobs can really be beneficial to the people that are in TANAP and some of the DFACs programs.
What is the educational requirement for a social worker? Is it two-year, four-year?
Typically, it's a four-year degree, but it doesn't have to be in social work, so it can be a related field and they look at experience as well. And so, there's a lot of people in the community that actually fall under that, the offices of that, they just are not aware of job openings and so one of the things that I'd like to do is really promote that better because when we don't have really good caseworkers that are concerned about our children and when we have caseworkers that don't live in Rockdale or aren't from this community, I am greatly concerned about the quality of programming and care because right now, we're sending 85% of our children in foster care out of this county.
Because we don't have enough foster parents.
Yeah, we don't have enough foster home parents.
One of the things that I've heard from DFACs workers over time is there's not enough supervision. You bring in a very new worker and they get loaded with 125 cases and there's no availability of them to have any supervision or direction or what, and yet they're held accountable and they're often, if there's something adverse happens, they're the one that's held with the legal ramifications of that. So, I think supervision and training particularly of new workers who are fresh, college, first job, no experience with children, no experience with parents, and with the community, it's just incredible.
So, two things on that. One is that they have a mentorship in place that they just started a couple of months ago that's supposed to be, you know, an effective tool towards working, towards those goals. Additionally, they have partnered with several of the schools who are really working hard to prepare students for the actual experience of working in an environment like that and started doing internships. And I know that that's been in place for a couple of months as well with several of the colleges. So, the feet-on-the-street type of internships, I think, will be very productive for them because they, you know, I think everybody who goes into that field, most of the people have the belief that they're going to fix people and they're going to fix problems and if you care enough, it'll fix all those problems, but unfortunately, that's not reality. And so, to have that experience upfront in an internship format, I think it's very productive because some of those kids that won't make it, at least you know while they're in an internship versus an employment situation that looks bad for them on a resume and probably leaves a bad taste in their mouth about employment and working with children. So, I think you're right about the internship opportunities, that definitely means to be a very strong piece of what they do. But the caseload, I want to say is about 27 ideal, ideally for them, they would love to see that, but I think it can be as high as 40.
Oh, no, 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 my pest worker, I'm a former foster parent.
Right now, current times?
That's done.
So, what do you think it is?
I know my former pest worker who I talked to quite, she has 56 cases.
Really? Well, they always tell you the good numbers, so I expect only in the 40 range, yeah, the highs. But certainly, something that needs to continually be addressed. I think they definitely have the right person in the job. Commissioner Bobby Cable was an outstanding leader and I can't say enough good things about the things that he's been able to accomplish. He actually was a foster child in North Carolina and so he was previously at the Department of Early Care and Learning in Georgia and did a fabulous job turning that agency around and then was actually pulled over to the Department of Family and Children's Services when there were a couple of deaths that happened in the state and they knew there needed to be some improvements. And so, typically, that job is hard for many reasons, but a lot of times because you're the scapegoat for when something does go wrong. But he's been very diligent about providing structure for the agency and really advocating for his employees to get more people on board. And so far to date, I think definitely the governor has listened to what the needs are and I expect in the next legislative session that we'll see requests for increases in salary for the employees in the Department of Family and Children's Services. So, any other questions?
I'm curious if you heard from very many of your constituents last year during the session about any of the bills that were going through.
You know, that's one of the biggest challenges, I mean, we heard from an array of people, but not nearly as many as I think we need to hear from. One of the, one of the hard things for me, and of course, it was my first year there and I'm glad that I had the experience of the county and when I worked at DC to really balance some of the requests and things like that, but Kathleen's been up there 26 years and we're real fortunate and that's one of the reasons that I picked Kathleen, is that she lives five minutes from my house, she lives right here in District 43, and most people up there don't have that luxury to know the way out of the district. And to me, that was really important because when constituents need services, she can quickly not only support me, but also support them by knowing what agency to call and how that we can be most effective in getting problems resolved. But I do have a newsletter people can sign up for, but again, it's really hard to get constituent feedback and interest. To date, the biggest town hall we've had has by far been the Criminal Justice Reform seminar last Monday. We had a pretty full auditorium at Rockdale Career Academy for that.
But we don't hear from, we really don't, we hear from a lot of outside groups outside of the district sending their mass emails on a particular big piece of legislation. And I think, I worked for two senators, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but, you know, we respond, but I will go through the emails and pick out the ones in our district and put it on my constituency services database. But as a whole, because I believe and I think Senator Vinessa believes, she represents 43, she also represents the whole state, she's part of it. So, whatever we send out, if you send me something from Ringgold on a subject, we try to respond to everybody during the session, I just think that's good practice, I just think, you know, they took the time to write us, I'm sure they're, and we don't, not all offices down there do that. I just love constituency service work, so that's my passion. But we don't and we, and I'm in there 26 years and the only county that I've ever worked for were, pardon the pun, I say, "Oh, Lord, they're coming off the porch at session time," is Cobb County. I've worked for a lot of, but this county, I worked for a senator from company, we don't give any for the district, which is strange. I mean, even now, Senator Vinessa has her website, her emails, it's random.
And it's, and that's a little, I mean, I go to so many places in the community that I hope that just is an open door for people to have that conversation. I mean, I bet this legislative session, they picked, how many business cards at the Capitol?
500.
No, the thousands, the thousands.
The thousands, two boxes.
So, he knows we're gone in no time.
Yes.
I've easily given out 2,500 this year, so I, you know, just like when I was a commissioner here, my fucking. I was a commissioner here, my phone number is on everything I do, my personal cell phone, my email address, I'm certainly accessible, but there's just not that level of engagement. But I will say that when people have contacted me, we've always tried to be very responsible, even responsive, even if it's something that's really on a federal level, we still connect people at that level. And I had a gentleman show up at an event that we hosted, and he said, Ms. Van Ness, I only came because you fixed my problem and saved my house. And I was like, what? And he said, I contacted you, I think it was Mr. Hughes, and the story goes that I think they were taking out extra money from his Medicare, and it was to the tune of about thirteen hundred dollars per year, but that meant that he was about to lose his house. And so that difference, for some, may not seem like a very big deal, but for him, it was everything, because that meant not only did he very likely lose his home, it was really just the nick of time, and so he personally, even though he has a back issue, he wore his brace and said, I couldn't miss coming to see you today, just to tell you that, and I thought that meant a lot to me, and of course I passed it along to Kathleen, we worked on that as well. But those are the stories that really motivate you to continue helping, but one of the things I wanted to talk about tonight was just learning to advocate for issues. So many people don't know how to use their own voice to get, to get real change for whatever their problem is. And at the Capitol, I hope you will all come visit next year when the session starts in January, but at the Capitol, what we see is we see literally outside of the House chambers and the Senate chambers, it's like a swarm of people and their lobbyists, and there are some, of course, citizens there, but the most effective people this year, if I had to give an award to the most effective lobbyist for this year, lobbying group, it would have to be the licensed professional counselors. The person that was the executive director and led that group, they all dressed in green, and when they came in, you clearly knew, oh, this is the licensed professional counselors. And they were being threatened with not being able to serve the public anymore in the capacity they had been in the previous years, and what would happen in the state of Georgia is that social workers and psychiatrists were trying to support legislation that would take away the opportunity for them to serve the public like they had. So it's really the one word in the legislation which would have taken away the opportunity for the world insurance. And I would tell you, it was so interesting to sit on the committee and hear the language and terminology for that one word that was so instrumental, but you have to definitely listen to all sides of what's being proposed, because when the social workers would talk about it, I was like, I don't think that makes sense, but then when the psychiatrists would talk about it, you're like, yeah, I agree with you, but then when you talk to the licensed professional counselors, you're like, what am I missing here? Why is this such a huge deal? And then put all the pieces together in a puzzle. So I've learned to try not to listen to just one side of information, but it will be a little bit beyond scope of what you listen to when using your tool or deciding on passing legislation or leaving out areas in committee. Let's see, I was also going to talk about just advocating in general. So one of the things that I encourage people to do is certainly to write your legislators. Phone calls are good, but in writing is certainly better, because then we have a record, and once we respond, we can follow up and make sure that we have addressed your concerns. I try and connect people as much as possible, if they have similar interests to established organizations, connecting them with those organizations. So for instance, if they have a special needs child, there's advocacy groups and programs like FOCUS, which is a training program for parents with special needs children. So connecting people in different issues really, I think, broadens the scope of power when they go toward the legislation. So probably one of the movements this year that I thought was most interesting was for the expansion of medical marijuana in the state of Georgia. And so currently, there's a list of several different diseases that can apply for a medical card, and if they have a medical card, they can actually get cannabis oil, which has been used to treat several of those illnesses for relief of pain and those kind of things. And seizures would be one, so there's several things on there, there's sickle cell amenia, seizures.
There's a whole.
There's a whole list of things.
It started for just the children that have Alzheimer's.
Right, and so the list has expanded, but there's definitely a movement to expand it even further, to add autism to the list, to also add cancer and certain stage, like stage four cancer, to also add terminal illness, and I'm going to try and make sure I get this one right, I think it's epidermis fibrosis, which is a skin disease, and it's very, very rare, but I know that that person actually came to the Capitol and testified and was very persuasive, and I know Senator Renee Utrman was especially taken by that situation and case and the potential to relieve pain for that person. So the personal testimony is so important, and one of the things that we do in the process is we have committees. So once a piece of legislation is created, it goes to a committee, it's assigned to a committee that would be relevant to that legislation. So, let's pick a piece of legislation. Ah, let's take a piece of legislation. Yes, yeah.
Mary Margaret Oliver's?
Yeah, that one's going nowhere.
Yeah, that one's okay. That didn't even make it out of committee.
Casino gambling.
Do what?
Okay, casino gambling, not, that, okay. So casino gambling, the way that looks right now is those lobbyists will approach different legislators and have conversations. Legislation could be drafted by somebody that would be very persuasive and experienced, and so once they find that particular senator or House member, there will be a lot of behind-the-scenes discussions and conversations, and it could possibly move forward if it's considered to be important enough, it can move to a committee for a hearing. And so gambling will probably go to regulated industries or-
What's that?
Casino gambling.
No, that's economic development and tourism.
So that would, okay, so that would be our committee, economic development and tourism. And so when that would come to committee, we would have opportunities for people to come to the hearing, and so our committee is probably twelve to thirteen people, and it's made up of just senators. And so in that committee, we have a chairman and a vice chairman, and then the legislation is presented and given to all of us on the committee. Once it's given to us, then we would have a hearing, and at the hearing, you can sign up to testify for or against, and it can be citizens, it can be agencies that support it, like it can be the Baptist Association is speaking in opposition, and it could mean the entertainment industry is speaking in favor of. And so many times, the chairman will limit the time, so I've seen everything from time limitation from twelve minutes to an unlimited timeframe. And so those hearings start, you're the for, you're the against, if people are ready to vote, then they can decide to pass it, or they can decide to deny it, or they can decide to hold it over to the next meeting for more research. So then if it passes out of committee favorably, then it would go to the Rules Committee, and in the Rules Committee, they have so many pieces of legislation, and once, if you're the person hearing the legislation, then you actually would go to the Rules Committee every day, and you would hope to present and have your piece of legislation selected by a member of the Rules Committee. And that's why they say, they say the Rules Committee is such a special committee to be on, because it's very powerful. And so if that legislation's selected, then it can move forward and be placed on the calendar for a full vote in the Senate.
How many said there's one in the Rules Committee?
Seventeen.
Seventeen, I think.
Or is there anybody close to Rockdale that's on the Rules Committee?
No.
No, that takes lots of seniority.
Yeah. So rules, and I would say appropriations are the top two, that are the most challenging.
Do you have any friends in the Rules Committee?
I have very good friends on the Rules Committee. So, one of the things to remember though is, like, I've been appointed to the Economic Development and Tourism Committee, Education and Youth, which is the critical piece you need to change to have education reform moving forward, Health and Human Services, which of course, we're going to hear the expansion of Medicaid waivers for 2017, and then State Institutions and Properties, and I'm actually the secretary, so we get to go visit like the prison and other things that state my own or that kind of thing. So, those are all good, but I'm also on the MARTOP Committee, which is the MARTOP Committee for legislators, and so I am actually the chair of the Public Safety Committee. And so, I, we'll look at the schedule and see if there's anything big on November seventh. Have I mentioned that to select that before the very important day of mine?
MARTOP?
Yes.
I think they canceled that.
Excellent, that's good.
You haven't had a chance to put your calendar.
No.
It's deleted, ruined, changed.
Well, sometimes they pick random dates to have these committee meetings, and so then we go downtown, but I just go downtown as needed and called. But typically, our session runs from January to about March or April this year, because it's a non-election year, it'll probably run through April and be spread out, so it gives us time in between legislative days to actually have committee meetings and things like that, but it's very, very fast-paced. In fact, because of my committees, we might have an education committee at one, economic development at three, and then sometimes health and human services at four or five.
Usually, health and human services is always at four, because they can live for hours, as you know. Those big ones, they try to put as the last meeting of the day, because yeah, there's time. It starts losing members.
How long is a legislative day?
Forty legislative days.
I mean, what time does it start?
So, we typically start our day at nine o'clock, and that's with a caucus meeting, so the majority party meets together at nine o'clock, and we go over the presentation of legislation for the day and talk about if there's any concerns or questions or things like that. A lot of the work that's being done right now over these last couple of months is really in preparation for 2017 to see what we're going to be doing, and that's why we sent out a letter to all of the elected officials to make sure that they were aware that we need your legislative agenda now so that we can prepare for 2017. I think historically, in our district, people have waited till as late as December or sometimes January, well, really by then, it's kind of more of a cursory thing than anything, it doesn't mean anything at that point, we've already been doing the work and the agenda's worked for the best part of the set. So we did let legislators know that. In addition, I did offer to help any of the organization, any of the partners in the community, whether it's the school system or Rockdale County Government, whoever, help prepare their legislative agenda, because right now, you're paying almost a hundred thousand dollars to Rockdale County for a lobbyist.
How effective has Rockdale County been as far as soliciting help or legislation to the legislature?
How?
How did it do that?
No, no, how effective?
No, I mean, like, has Rockdale County really approached us?
Are they aggressive?
No.
No, but I don't-
Because she's not the chairman of delegation, if Senator Van Ness is the chairman of delegation, everybody would be on our door, but most of them will go to the chair, and the chair will disperse for she or he, I don't even remember the chair, to the members of the delegation, that's usually, and that's with all three, she's got three delegations, Newton, DeKalb.
Correct, correct.
But no, for Rockdale?
Really nothing, but I will say, DeKalb has been very, very busy, and I was really impressed by the DeKalb delegation, they actually presented to us all of the DeKalb delegation, and they had their agenda laid out, and what they did is each commissioner took a turn and presented one of the agenda items, and so of those five, light and abandoned homes was one of theirs, which is really provocative, that's one of my hot topics, and so we were able to create a piece of legislation that got to committee but never got out of committee, we were near the end of session, and, you know, it just needs to be reformed, the legislation itself, and so more work done on that. But I was really proud of the fact, when I called CEO Li May, that he said, Senator, my co enforcement person, Marcus Hellman, is at your disposal whenever you need him, if you need information, testimony, whatever, you just call him and let him know. And so when we were going to committee to have a hearing, I was able to call CEO Li May, and it might have been eight o'clock at night, just to tell him, you know, the next day you're going to have a hearing, and he said, do you want me to come testify? And it was the next day at one o'clock. And that's really impressive, that's the kind of partnership that you need to have in place to make things happen, and I think even for the committee members, it was really eye-opening to see what you had struggled with, and if you have not heard, they have dealt with things like Brandon Hills, which is an apartment complex that is known for not only just the pretty much dirt world conditions, but also the high level of sex trafficking issues that are there, and I know that when we took the unholy tour that Tim Eccles does by the bus, it's a tour just to show you sex trafficking hotspots in the area in Atlanta, and when we went on that, Brandon Hills was there, and you saw little kids, like two, three, and four-year-olds outside by themselves, one kid was in diapers, I mean, no supervision, it's just unbelievable that that goes on in today's world, but when you have light, you know, it's the broken window theory, that more victims will come, and so that's why it's so important to take care of as soon as possible. And that's really what I'm going to do, is just find a way to give our little governments the authority to address those things, and then try every other option first. And so in the community, we've had homes that have been on the list for years and years and years, and when that happens, what happens is the other houses in the community are then devalued, and so many of the people are stuck in places where they can't get that problem addressed, and it can even create environmental hazards, like we've seen at some of the properties in the community. So that's truly the goal, is to find a way to legally address those homes and places so that we can quickly get those addressed and then also raise the property values in the community, because restoring the tax digest back to the numbers of yesteryear and even greater is really how we're going to help restore our communities and have the income level that we need, as well as keep taxes low, and so. So that was a, I mean, that was a good step in the right direction without legislation, but certainly it needs to be implemented. Any other questions? Does anybody have suggestions for how to engage in the community and really get more feedback on issues that they're interested in?
I find it's hard to know what's going on with the elimination of the newspaper, you know, it's just, who knows what the events are?
Right, well, I do have a newsletter, and I put a lot-
I see a little bit on social media, but I guess, and some of it's not, no, whatever, but it's like, I need a day or two, so I can't just look at, say, oh, I'm going this evening, you know?
Yes. Well, and I think that's probably been one of my biggest challenges this year, is just building that list consistently, and so there are so many groups and organizations that we work with in the community, and one of the other things we started researching is a dialogue between Rockdale, Newton, and DeKalb, so that we can really have collaborative sort of, have solutions that we learn in DeKalb that work well, and share those with Newton and Rockdale, and things that are working great in Rockdale, so that people would know about those in our surrounding counties, and really bring partnerships to the forefront. And I thought the meeting the other day was going, probably about thirty people.
What, Quell and Justice?
No, the healthcare district.
Oh, yeah, we had, Ms. Morris just walked in, we had, we had a large group, I did prepare, I think like thirty-six.
Yeah, it was a good turnout, but there's even more partners that we can bring together, and again, we've not really, in my opinion, looked at things from a district-wide level, but with the challenges that we face as a government financially, I think when we can learn from each other, it's always a win-win situation. And one of the things I know DeKalb has done, which I thought was really great, they did this through a grant program, that they actually have a mobile food program, and the food program actually sets up, and they have the baskets on the front where people can come in and look at fresh fruits and vegetables and buy them right then and there, and it's a great way to get some of those options in our lower-income areas in the community. And so in Newton County, we talk about what's called food deserts. Food deserts are the areas where your poverty is highest, and yet your closest option for food purchases is typically your convenience stores. And so we all know that convenience stores typically would have the higher-priced food items, so breakfast for- So breakfast for some people may look like donuts and Mountain Dew every day. And so, you know, someone would say, well, how does that impact you? It's a personal choice. Well, it is a personal choice, but it impacts all of us because typically those people are going to go to the emergency room. And their healthcare issues are going to be, fall back on us through additional costs and, um, problems that you'll see with, you know, a lack of being able to go to work because of health issues and then you have people that are unemployed, you know, possible dependency on the system. And so to break that cycle, they're looking for options to really address those food deserts. But in speaking with the commissioner for agriculture, there's really not a lot that the government can do. It's really going to be up to the local areas to really see if there's opportunities for addressing those issues. And I will say Newton County has really started a strong, um, locally grown food program, organic options. And because of Oxford College, partnerships grown even stronger. And so I think that their goal is really going to be addressing that. And if there's an upcoming meeting on Wednesday, then I'll be attending to hear kind of the results of how that's moving forward. Any other questions?
Just, just a comment we'd ask about the engagement. I just think setting up more regularly scheduled meetings so that people know that they're on a regular basis, which I mean you just got, you know, got in the center of last year and, you know, getting everything moving. I think moving forward and that things were set more on a regular basis and people know, like, you know, um, this time.
Second Tuesday of month we're in DeKalb, third Tuesday we'd be in Rockdale, first Tuesday in Newton.
Yeah, yeah, regular schedule.
Okay. So like, yeah, so you'd really be in every county every three months, basically?
Yeah, well, no, like the first Monday of, let's just hypothetically, first Monday of the month, maybe, or whatever day of the week. You set on your schedule a town hall and then second Monday, town hall in Rockdale, third Monday, town hall in DeKalb. Just make it consistent.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good thought, Larry.
Yeah, they would rotate and, you know.
And everybody would know.
And everybody would know that, you know, because different issues pop up all the time. People's concerns are different all the time. And as, and there may be a hot topic that's coming up at that time and you could actually, you know, know you're going to have that meeting scheduled and say, okay, we're going to address this hot issue that is making.
And I think that when we have guest speakers, like tomorrow night, we have Senator Renee Unkerman who's going to address some of that healthcare expansion opportunities and some of the things we've been working on as a committee. You know, we'll see how that goes. It's been really hard to get into Newton because they want to charge for everything.
That's true.
Libraries in Rockville and Newton have been so generous that they've offered these rooms at no cost. But for Newton, I found out today that I had a meeting scheduled for next Monday and they canceled it. We don't do that. We don't do town halls. So the courthouse down in Covington cost a minimum of three hundred dollars. The Turner Hill.
Was five.
The Turner Hill was five hundred dollars. So when the people that need it the most are asking for these things, I mean, I feel like what am I going to do, stand on the street or?
But isn't that something, but isn't that something we can handle through legislation? That if it's a publicly owned.
A state-owned.
A state-owned facility. That if it's a town hall meeting, constituents of that area, then that building has, has to allow, you know, that's something we can handle through legislation.
Well, you know, I don't like always creating new legislation.
Sometimes, sometimes you have to do this.
But, you know, certainly I think the library board would be interested to know about what happened today. First I was told that we could use the space and it was all set up. And I said, well, can I print a form off online? And she said, "No, I can't find it." And I said, "Well, I don't see it anywhere. Can I take one from Rockdale or DeKalb and just mark, fill it out, mark it at the top for Newton and send it to you to reserve it?" And she said, "No, just come by before the event." And so I fill out a piece of paper and I'm like, well, that's an inconvenience that I have to drive all the way down to Oakville. And so, um, I offered two other options for me to take care of it, make sure. And then I got a message on Saturday, "Sorry, we can't use the room." We have a, we have a ninety-seventh birthday party for one evening. And I'm like, okay. I, I've about had it.
Well, see, with me as, with me as a taxpayer, that kind of legislation, I don't mind. Because I want my tax dollars. I want to be on that meeting that concerns this community at, at a publicly owned facility. I want to be on that.
And your tax dollars paid for.
Would that be a school building also?
Well, I was at Rockville Career Academy before, so certainly, you know, I have a good relationship with Newton County Schools, so maybe that would be a good idea.
And they have a pretty, they have a pretty big church.
Yeah, they do. And that might be good. I think when you don't have a lot of information, you tend to have people that are more reactionary. And for many reasons, I didn't want to use the courthouse in Newton County. I think now there's the stigma of it being a very hostile environment. And for instance, when you rent it, you have to pay, three hundred dollars pays for two deputies. I don't want deputies. I don't feel unsafe. I don't, I feel like that just sets a tone for a town hall meeting that's, um, not positive. And so that, that's just not an abusive environment for a town hall meeting. But I was offered Troy State University, which is where we'll have the event tomorrow night. Very generously of them. And so it's a convenient location in the center of town and I think it'll be a very positive experience, so. But it's been a big struggle in Newton County to try and get information to the community. And in fact, today I was down on the square and a lady said, "Why do you only come out during election season?" And I said, "No, wait a minute. I just got here in January and I've been out in the community, but let me tell you about your community. Your community is blocking access to your legislators. I've tried to have meetings and I've attended public meetings. I've been at your forums. I however did not go to any of your meetings about the mosque. Oh, well, I'll be going." But those kind of things really preclude the citizens getting engaged in Newton County. And so there's very, very little participation, um, in, in what's going on. But tomorrow night, we'll see. I mean, there were a lot of people interested in the topic of, um, healthcare expansion and good feedback from just meeting people on the street and giving them information, giving word out, so.
Well, during session, it would be kind of difficult to come to the district. But I do appreciate like usually sometime in January, the whole delegation comes to Rockville County to give an update on what legislation is going on right then.
Yeah, right. And that is what we do. Before the, this is traditionally the beginning, before session, the delegation will come and disperse what topics are coming up for the next coming. Then after session, generally the delegations come back and tell you what they did, what came through, dah dah dah. They do, they have done that for a long time.
We did one at RCA in March or April.
Yeah, we did one early on.
Something like that, very early on. And, um.
And I'm close. I mean, I, I pre, I say Senator Venace will go downtown just to, you gotta sign letters or you have to do this or whatever. I dropped it off at the West Campus and it's something that he'd rather wait and take it to her. And I live a mile from her, so it's not like. But what I'm trying to say is if something comes up during session and you, Janice said, "Oh, so-and-so needs this Kathleen," I will figure out a way to get it to you, whether I have to meet you somewhere, and I have done that before. That's the part of the job I love, is taking care of our constituency. And I've been that way the whole twenty-six years I've been there. It's not, I mean, I'm thankful I'm working for Janice because it does make it convenient. Well, right here and I know the community and I know the area. But I've done that for all the senators I've worked for. You all pay my salary, so that's how I look at it.
All right. Any other questions or areas of interest? Okay, well, thank you for your time tonight. I appreciate your feedback and happily come to sign in if you. So if you have not signed in, please make sure that you do that so we do have your annual information and you can communicate with you and that's for sure.